Good evening, everyone. Come on in, have a seat. We're happy you're all here tonight. Would you please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Chair Seberg.
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Spall.
Here.
Mrs. Bresia.
Here.
Mr. Beepe.
Here.
And Mr. Island.
Thank you. Dr. Newman, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
Yes, ma'am, I have an addition to the agenda. I need to add a personnel matter to the closed session. And then, for deletion, we're going to delete Discussion Item C, under Discussion, Central Office Discussion.
Thank you. Can I get a motion for approval of the public meeting agenda?
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as modified.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Hollingsworth, second by Vice Chair Stevens, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as modified. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries 7-0. Tonight, we have several spotlights, superintendents, announcements, and spotlights. Mrs. Radford?
Thank you Chair Seberg. Good evening, other members of the board, and good evening to our full house tonight. Thank you all for being here. As Chair Seberg said, I am here to share our spotlights and announcements for this evening. And although you normally come down to stand with us, we have several that will present ahead of time, so I'll just ask that you remain in your seats until we get to the end. The Virginia School Boards Association designates February as School Board Appreciation Month as a way for communities to thank school boards for the work and advocacy they do on behalf of public school students in the Commonwealth. Tonight, we have a collection of administrators, staff, and students here to share some of the things they are most proud of in their schools. And honestly, what better way to express appreciation than by spotlighting the investment of time and funding the board provides to our schools? So at this time, I will introduce them in lots of, maybe about two, as they come to prepare their presentations. We'll begin with Baldwin Elementary School, Mr. Dave Rupert, followed by Jenny Dean Elementary, Mr. Brian Coleman.
Okay, good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, members of the School Board, Dr. Newman. Thank you all for having us here today. We're here to appreciate you, so thank you for everything that you do. It's an honor to see you guys are a very active board. We see you in our buildings, we see you around, and so, thank you for that. That's very important to us. So, we're here to share a little bit about Baldwin Elementary, to get you to know a little snippet of who we are. So, we are a Project Lead the Way school, and we're very proud to... Oh, we're using this? Where's the...
The display is not on.
No display.
Oh, there we go.
There we go. All right, just click it. Stand by. Okay. Okay, yes, we're very proud to be a Project Lead the Way distinguished school, a launched school. So, launched schools are elementary schools. So, around the United States, there's 283 distinguished, launched elementary schools. We happen to be one. So, we're very proud of that. I'm going to explain what that means in a bit. We've been a distinguished school for three years running, and really, this provides our students a transformative learning experience in terms of projects consistently through kindergarten, kindergarten through fourth grade. So, you know, as we all grew up, projects are one of those things that we all remember, right? You learn through doing things, and you can always kick back and remember something that you did, and you say, "Wow, I learned it that way." Well, our students get that experience multiple times during the school year. We'd like to thank you all for the funding that you give for our school. We are a themed school, so we have to go above and beyond on some different types of trainings and different types of things. So as you can see in the picture, that's us with some teacher leaders that went down to Orlando to refresh our skills on PLTW. It's ever-changing, new modules, different things every year, so we really appreciate you guys supporting us going down there. The summit has thousands upon thousands of people around the country. It's really a huge thing in parts of the country, especially in middle schools and high schools. But going down, we're very proud to say that as our team was working through the presentations, there were people coming up to us and asking us, "What do we do at the elementary level?" Just to integrate. And really, it's a testament to, over time, at Baldwin, Laura Goldsung and her team established this school, and really, we just took the reins and ran with it. So, she's our Director of Instruction, and we appreciate her, and appreciate everything that the team has done to lay it down so we can do this each day. Okay, so, our modules, you know, they're projects. So, two projects are integrated into our science curriculum throughout the course of the school year. You know, if you go into kindergarten and you see a project in kindergarten, you're really seeing kids talking about being scientists. That's the best part about being in kindergarten, they're saying, "Hey, every discovery is, I'm a scientist." Okay? And there's nothing wrong with that. Inquiry, hands-on learning is really important, and understanding that they have a voice and part of a process. So, you don't want to hear me talk about it, I'm sure that I have some great people from the school. I have, we're going to have, we have some third graders here, Ms. Bake, your third-grade teacher, and two third-grade students that are going to share some of their experiences from PLTW.
So, I thank you for supporting our efforts with Project Lead the Way. Third grade is lucky enough to do two amazing modules, one we've already completed and one we are currently in. We've already completed our Changing Earth and Forces module, and we have started our Simple Machines module. During our Changing Earth module, though, students actively learn about how our world is constantly changing due to both the natural and human forces. They get an opportunity to research, and we often get a chance to learn right along with them, and let their questions kind of guide their learning about what are natural disasters and how are they affecting life on Earth. They then move on to learn about the forces of erosion and how we as humans change the Earth and affect erosion as well. And then, they learn about ways to prevent erosion. And the last part is that they get to go through the engineering process and build a module and an example of how they would prevent erosion. And my two students here are Mason Bailey and Sierra Johnson. They have both worked together to build a module to prevent erosion, and it was actually the one that prevented erosion the best out of all five groups in my classroom. And Sierra has an example of their model here. They created a dam in order to take the soil in and planted trees to help the roots hold the soil even more. Sierra, go ahead. Go ahead. And I'm going to hand it off to Mason, who has a wonderful letter that he wrote for you all.
Dear School Board members, thank you so much for letting my peers and me learn using Project Lead the Way. We enjoy PLTW because we get to build and learn about real-world problems like erosion. My classmates and I learned that many natural disasters like floods and earthquakes can cause erosion. After we learned tons of new information, we built a model using the engineering process to prevent erosion. Our model was successful, and we had so much fun learning all about natural disasters and erosion through our PLTW module. Thank you, Mason Bailey, third grader at Baldwin Elementary. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Sierra, Mason, and Ms. Bakey, and thank you to the School Board again for all that you do. We really appreciate it.
Thank you all. Please go back and tell all the Rockets we love them.
Thank you, Mr. Rupert.
Good evening, School Board. My name is Brian Coleman, I am the principal at Jenny Dean Elementary School. I'm not going to take up too much of your time. At this time, I do want to introduce who is with me today. I have Juliana Pogonis. Stand, show them. I have Abby Richardson. And Annabelle Goodman. And at this time, I do believe I have a video that is going to be played.
(Music)
That is the presentation of a failed YouTuber right there. I did that all by myself, I'm so proud. At this time, I would like to call each one of my students up so that they can present the School Board with a gift from our entire staff and all of Jenny Dean. I would first like to call up Annabelle Goodman.
Ms. Spall?
Ms. Spall? Ms. Bresia?
Ms. Williams?
Ms. Williams?
And next I have Juliana.
Ms. Brooks? Ms. Stevens?
And last, we have Abby, who will be presenting the final three. She can't read my writing, I'm sorry.
Hollingsworth?
Mr. Hollingsworth?
Dr. Newman?
Dr. Newman? You got to take, get your steps in. Ms. Seberg?
Ms. Seberg?
Chairman Seberg? And before I end, our motto here is Smile, Staff Members Impacting Lives Every Day. And we call our students Stars because they are smart, talented, awesome, respectful, and smart. And last, I will leave you guys with this. I just want to thank all of you for being so accessible and so supportive, and giving me the opportunity to make an impact, not only on the students and the staff at Jenny Dean, but also the parents. I am forever grateful for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman, and thank you, Jenny Dean Dolphins.
Very good. Thank you, Baldwin, thank you, Jenny Dean. Next, we will have Hayden Elementary with our Principal, Karis Brooks, followed by Round Elementary, Mr. Andrew Wilson.
Good evening, Dr. Newman, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, and our Manassas City School Board. Happy School Board Appreciation Month. My name is Karis Brooks, I'm the principal at Hayden Elementary. Tonight, I am happy to share some of the highlights from our recent annual PTA Multicultural Event. Hayden had 17 countries represented at the event, which included traditional dress, music, dancing, and of course, eating. This evening, we have three students, Felipe Salazar, who's a third-grade student at Hayden, Isabella Guardardo, and Dela Lee, who are both fourth-grade students at Hayden. They will each share something about the event.
Hi, my name is Felipe Salazar. Salazar. The multicultural event was a great special event. My family represented Ecuador, my country. The multicultural event was very nice and wonderful, and including the food and all that stuff. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Dela Lee. Buenas noches, yo te llamo Dela Lee. I'm going to tell you what I thought about our multicultural night. Yo voy a decirle que yo pienso de la noche de multiculturar. I thought it was a fun way to learn and eat food from other countries. Yo pienso que el noche de multiculturar es un divertido paso para saber y comer la comida de otros países. The performances were a great way to learn traditional songs and dances. The performances eran un bien paso para ver los bailes y canciones tradicionales de otros países. Overall, I think it is a fun event where you can learn more about other countries. En general, yo pienso que esto evento es un paso divertido para saber más de otros países. Thank you. Gracias.
Hello, good evening, my name is Isabella Guardardo. I come from a Salvadoranian family. My school is Hayden Elementary, and I'm in fourth grade. And I'm going to talk about the multicultural night of things you can do over there. You can sing, dance, share food from your country, and get to know other countries' food, dances, and you can share your culture. For me, I thought it was really fun, and I sang Latino America with my class from Mr. Salazar and Ms. Klein. I also thought it was really fun to share the song. I also danced a traditional dance. And also, there was a stand from my teacher, Mr. Salazar. He's from Ecuador. He had a stand with a pork sandwich. This is a great way to get to know other cultures and people, and people can get to know your culture too.
Thank you. Just one note before we play our video of highlights from the event, all three students are in our dual-language program at Hayden.
Gather round now, look at me. Respect and love the only way. If you want to come, come with me. The door is open every day.
On behalf of the students, families, and staff of Hayden Elementary, we just want to thank you for your continued support of our schools.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks, and all the Hayden Hawks.
Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, Dr. Newman, members of our board. Thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight to express our sincere appreciation for you and the work you do in support of our schools. With me this evening, I'm really excited to introduce a couple of special folks that have joined me. Ms. Dolly, first-grade classroom teacher. Ms. Hermanson, first-grade ESOL teacher, and a couple of our special first-grade students are here tonight to showcase a meaningful learning experience that's happening in our school every day. So, thank you again.
They are so excited. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, I want you to think back to your favorite book when you were in first grade. That book that made the difference in your life. I know mine was Alexander and the Terrible, Horrible, No Good, Very Bad Day. And I don't know if it was the book, or the way my teacher read it, or the fact that we got to do something with it. Whatever it was, that is what I, as a teacher, want to instill in my own first graders. So, we were, as a first-grade team, in our CLT meetings that happen on a weekly, twice a week, and we were talking about our targeted support groups that we have, our block time. And we were talking about the kids that we're working with, and we break those kids into groups. I have kids who are learning just how to decode words, eventually getting them to be able to read Alexander and the Terrible, Horrible, No Good, Very Bad Day. And then, we have kids already at that third-grade reading level and the first-grade reading level, second grade, and so on. So, we have a variety of readers in our grade level. And we are targeting just on those one group. But I said to myself, and I said to our group, "What do we do with those kids that are already reading? We need to meet their needs. We need to make sure that we're enhancing their reading, because reading is not just decoding. It is comprehending, it's talking, it's having fun with it, it's laughing." As you know, as we grow up, a lot of us are in book clubs. You know, we read the book, we spend the week talking with people, we eat, we read, we talk, we laugh, we cry. We want that the same with first graders. And they can do it. And a lot of people think, "First graders in a book club? Yes." So, we created, yes, you can clap, absolutely. So, we decided we're going to have our own book club. So, with Mrs. Hermanson's help, we decided we're going to take those... What do we have? We have 33 first graders that are on grade level or above. And to me, that's amazing. So, we thought, okay, we're going to take that, and what are we going to do? We're going to create our club. So, we break them in every day for 20 to 30 minutes per day. You can see right here as we go through the slides. We started off with Mrs. Carter modeling good reading. So, here she is showing kids, what do good readers look like? Now that you can read, now that you get to join that reading club, what are you going to do? So, now we have our kids partnered up, either in groups of twos or threes. You can see they're sitting side by side, and there's a purpose for that. Because as they're reading, we want one to be the coach and one to be the reader. So, they're working together to help each other become more fluent, better readers. So, when you see them, they're on the floor, they're laying down, they're talking. As they're reading, you might have a teacher like Mrs. Hermanson sitting with them, guiding them through the text. What are these characters doing? What is the setting? What's the problem that's happening in this book? Did you like this book? Should we not read it again? Can we read it again? So, we're asking all those comprehension questions to get them what? To love to read. Because that is the ultimate goal, right? The ultimate goal is to keep reading. And so, through these book clubs, we are... And so, through these book clubs, we are hoping that we instill that. But, I thought, you know what, I could go on and on and on. I brought three book club members today. So, I want them to come up and share with you what they love and like about book club. So, I want to introduce those.
So, first up, we've got Jay from Mrs. Dolly's class.
My name is Jay. I just read this. Reading helped me learn how to read. I love reading because I can learn how to read.
Next up, we have Miles from Mrs. Whitley's class.
My name is Miles Melvin. My favorite thing about book club is we get to read books every day at school.
And now, we have Aneah from Mrs. Hill's class.
My name is Aneah Gackens. I love talking with my book club because we might solve one of the other people's questions.
And our last reader who couldn't be here tonight was Danica Patel, so I'm gonna read her a little speech for you.
My name is Danica Patel. My favorite thing about book club is where all my friends are reading, and I am happy that they're all interested in reading.
So, we asked if you would love to come to book club, bring a book, and come join us at 1:05 every day. For 1:05, 12:05? At 1:05 every day. We would love to have more books for these kids to read. So, please make a note, be ready to sit on the floor side by side, and be reading with your buddies and ready to talk, because you know 1st graders, they'll talk.
Thank you for all your support. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you all so much. Thank you, Round Raccoons. And I'll definitely be coming to book club.
Thank you. I just want to remind all of our participants to remain with us until the conclusion of all presentations, because we are joining together with our school board for a group photo at the end. I would like to note that one of the reasons I really like the way we do our presentations here is because our schools are literally taking you inside their classrooms so that you can see exactly where, why we budget money for instruction, but to see the fruit of the labor. You know, it's just amazing. And I think our students and our staff so far has done a wonderful job. So, can we give them another round of applause? It's not easy standing up here, so we really want to appreciate the work that they're doing in our schools. Next, we have our final elementary school, which will be Weems Elementary, with Principal Michelle Huttman, and then followed by Mayfield Intermediate, Dr. Donnie Fritschkorn.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Michelle Huttman, the very proud principal of Weems Elementary School. I brought a few of our students, all of our classes. Every child in the school participated in making cards for you all, so I have them. And my friends here, Emma, Martine, and Sebastian are going to pass them to you. Oh, and here comes Amelia. Way to go, buddy. So, they're gonna pass those cards to you, and our chorus sang a song for you. So, we have a video of that. Is it easier for you all to walk down and get cards, or should I have the children come up to you? Okay, all right. So, I'm gonna help you. Let's go up. Come on. They're all, they have the tags on them. A lot of the presentations were about the academic pieces and literacy, and you know, I'm a big fan. But it's also important for us to highlight the arts that you all support in our schools. So, with our artists and with our chorus, that kind of brings that all the way around.
Thank you, Mrs. Huttman, and all you Weems Wildcats. This is so precious. It's a video.
And here's our video. All right, we just have a video. Really quickly. That was just a little variation on the song they sang at the All City Chorus a couple of weeks ago. Thank you all for the opportunity to, for me, to serve this community right alongside of you. I appreciate it very much, and thank you so much for supporting our kiddos. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Well, good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, Dr. Newman, and the school board. As you know, Mayfield, we don't trust travel by one. We travel in groups. And tonight, we have a great group here with my assistant principals. We have Ms. Holbrook, Ms. Kaufman, Ms. Clark. And the highlight, which is gonna be conclusion, is going to be James. And James is here with his father, Mr. Masali. So, what we want to highlight for you tonight is we want to thank you for the opportunities that we're able to provide to our students, and all the incredible things that are happening inside Mayfield on a daily basis. And these are in large part due to the support that we receive from you, the school board. Tonight, we're going to introduce you to a term that we like to call "Mayfield Moment." A Mayfield Moment occurs when our community comes together to produce something meaningful. These brief moments can elevate us and change us for the better. I ask you to recall your 5th and 6th grade experiences. I bet you will return to a few peak moments in your time that you consider flagship moments. So, our goal is to create those meaningful moments at Mayfield on a daily basis. We would love our students to leave with 180 meaningful moments that they can remember from each year. But what we're able to do, some of these meaningful moments include our after-school clubs. One of the great signs of a school is when students want to stay after the school bell. And if you look at Mayfield, we have so many after-school clubs, Monday, or Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and they're highlighted by our staff and our students. A lot of the time, they're driven by our students' interest. We just started our 5th-grade basketball with Mr. Kuzmanich, who is a staple in the community. And probably everybody that goes through Mayfield has one of those Mayfield basketball shirts. We have our dance team, we have our cheer teams, which have been incredible additions. We have our safety patrols. We have our Vex Robotics. We have an anime club. And a lot of these clubs, we don't even know at the beginning of the year, because a student comes up to us with an interest and then finds a staff member who's able to support them. But we're able to offer these because of the transportation that we can provide our students, which is, again, is something that not many schools have. 415 buses after a 220 dismissal, that is an incredible thing that our students get. We also have our PBIS events and our student socials. These are really meaningful things, because, again, we get to highlight our students. We have our Student of the Month celebrations, where we invite 64 students every two months to celebrate with their families. And we pack everybody in there, and we have a great time, and we recognize our students. We have our student socials. And our student socials, again, are something that many schools can't do, but because of the support we have from our school board, we're able to provide transportation for over 300 students who want to attend these student socials. And these are memories that our kids are making with each other and with their teachers. I mean, if you look at some of these pictures, it's the teachers that are almost having just as good of a time as the students at these socials. And this year, one of the new additions we did is our tailgate, which we do at the beginning of the year just to introduce everybody. We invited our Osborne High School athletes down just to be there with our students, and it was an awesome experience. Our student celebrations, like I talked about. Here, you'll see a couple pictures that... And the bottom one is from our Student of the Month celebration, where we had to get every parent and every student that showed up, and they lined across the back. I mean, it was hard to find a space to take the picture for everybody, but it was great. And then you see our Student of the Month recognition, where we recognized over a third of our students for A Honorable and AB Honorable. So, again, great opportunities. Mets Sports, this is another thing that we're able to do because of the school board's support. This started three years ago. Our 6th graders had the opportunity to go to Mets. And working with Mr. Morris and his team, one of the great things about this is it starts to build that connection to Mets. It helps that transition. And it, again, builds our kids' connection to the school community in whole. And if you look at that top picture, that's another example. That's our teachers at a Mets basketball game celebrating our students. And, again, it's a way to bring the community together, and an awesome experience for our kids and our staff. One of the other things that we've really focused on this year is field trips, experiencing everything that's around us. This year, we've been to the Hilton Performing Arts Center twice with our 5th grade and our 6th grade. And our students absolutely love those presentations. They've seen the Manassas Ballet. And just last week, we had the Grammy Award-winning Crayle Concert that our students got to experience. And I tell you, every kid in that, that was a Mayfield moment. Every kid's going to remember that field trip, so it was an awesome experience. Two weeks ago, we took our entire 6th grade down to Washington DC for the Air and Space Museum so they could see what they're learning about in the classroom in real life. And I don't know if you've done a field trip with 6th graders to DC, but the field trip isn't just the Air and Space Museum. It's as soon as you leave Manassas City and everything that you see along the way into the DC and everything else. So, we get those experiences. And now, while we have James here in James' class, is they get field trips every day, or as often as Ms. Holbrook comes up to us with an idea, or Ms. Brown. And these are community-based learning experiences. And they've been to the Firehouse, they've been to just... Air and Space and Chantilly, Billy B's. But all these are, again, examples where the kids get out into the community to learn. And what it leads to is inclusivity. And this is something that our school should be really proud of. And, again, James, you are the star of this, because in here, we have James during our Honorable Ceremony, where he's coming up, being recognized in front of the entire student population. But then you also see them at the Hilton Performing Arts Center. You see him at the Firehouse. And James is one, but the other kids in his class are also excelling. The fact that we have Gloria, who's sitting there in the fire truck, and now she's attending encores along with Mr. Moore. And those are huge experiences. And then, right here, I have a quick, well, it's a, we won't watch the whole video, but this video, James, you want to come up? Ms. Gars, is there any way you could click on that if it plays? Can you click on that video? Oh. Wait. There it goes. Oh, don't worry. I'll send you the video. But what the video is, is James out at recess last week. And this was a spontaneous, this was in addition to our presentation. This was last week, and James was out there playing soccer with all the students in 4th grade and participating and being active. There it is. And you hear Mr. Moore coaching as well. But, again, these experiences, these are things that a lot of the community doesn't get to see. Why this happened is because of, again, the support that we have from you all. And it's these small Mayfield moments coming together to, again, have James experience stuff that we take for granted. And, again, we'd like to thank his father, because he was with us step by step throughout this. James has been with us for a year and a half now. And together with everybody working, with Mr. Moore's input, with Ms. Holbrook and our entire group, these experiences happen on a daily basis at Mayfield. And, again, why? Because of the school board's support. So, James, great job, buddy.
Good evening. My name is Mr. Moasi. And just as the principals have highlighted, James has come a long way. After the pandemic hit, and we had this virtual learning almost a year, it was very difficult for James, and he was transitioning to Mayfield. He could not settle down. And at some point, I thought of quitting my job and stay home, because he could not settle in class. James would not sit even five minutes or 10 minutes. But with the help of all this staff, and his teacher, Ms. Holbrook, James is able to sit as long as it can take. That's why he has been sitting here. And this is a great, great milestone. I just want to thank the whole staff, the team, Mr. Moore, and the principal, and the whole team working with James. And we thank you, the school board, for availing the resources that we make what we are seeing now. Thank you so much.
Again, thank you. We really mean it. And anytime you're there, we're gonna help make Mayfield moments for you all.
Thank you, Mr. Fritschkorn. Thank you, James. See you later. Love seeing those Mayfield moments. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you to Weems and to Mayfield. And, again, another reason why we love being here. It definitely takes a village, and so the partnerships with our parents, our families, you know, with our schools to help make sure that our students are successful is very powerful. So, thank you all for being here tonight. Next, we will have Baldwin Intermediate, Juliette Finnegan, followed by Mets Middle School, Sarah Milhone, I believe, and Gary Morris is the principal there. And then we'll close out with Osborne High School. Mr. Flugraft couldn't be here this evening, but Arnaz Dovavala, who runs our Cosmetology Department and our CTE program, is here with some students. So, they all share in that order. Ms. Finnegan.
Can you pull up their presentation, Mr. Hawkins? Do you know?
Yes, that's it. That's it.
Good evening, School Board Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, Dr. Newman, and school board members. I am Juliette Finnegan, the proud principal of Baldwin Intermediate School. And we are the proud Baldwin Intermediate Balto Huskies. Tonight, we are excited to highlight the story behind our Togo Awards, better known as our Unsung Hero Awards.
In nineteen twenty-five- In nineteen twenty-five, the theory broke out in Alaska where children were especially at risk of death. It was determined that the only way to deliver lifesaving serum in time to help the children was by sled dog teams. The Great Race of Mercy, a dog relay of twenty teams, was assembled and successfully delivered lifesaving serum to no Alaska. This journey was not possible without teamwork and unwavering commitment of one very special dog.
While the lead dog Balto led the fifty-three mile final leg, many argue that it was Togo who was the unsung hero. Twelve-year-old Togo pulled a team an outstanding two hundred sixty-four miles compared to an average of thirty-one miles each of the other dogs pulled. Togo showed the courage needed to lead his team through conditions many other teams would not even attempt and became known across Alaska as the unsung hero.
At Baldwin Intermediate School, we honor our unsung heroes who show unwavering character, leadership, and courage to do the right thing regardless of who's looking. Our unsung heroes' strengths and character create a thriving learning environment, ensure kindness to all, and model the honest of a young leader at Baldwin Intermediate School.
Tonight, we want to honor you, our hardworking and committed school board members, as unsung heroes in Manassas City Public School for the work, care, and effort you do behind the scenes to give us what we need to learn and grow as students and future leaders. Thank you for your courage and leadership and for doing the right thing regardless of who's looking.
At this time, our Huskies would like to honor our school board members with the Togo Award as unsung heroes for us.
Oh my goodness! That was a surprise! Wow! That's fantastic! Thank you so much, Baldwin Intermediate. This is wonderful.
Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, Dr. Newman, Dr. Goldberg, and the rest of our school board members. Thank you very much. My name is Gary Morris. I am the proud principal of Mets Middle School. Tonight with me, I have Vice Principal, Vice Principal, Assistant Principal Warren Carrington, Assistant Principal Ms. Sarah Milhone, Milhone. I don't know where I'm at tonight. I'm going to start over.
Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, and Dr. Newman, and the rest of the school board members. Again, my name is Gary Morris. I am the proud principal of Mets Middle School. Tonight, along with our assistant principals who remain nameless, I brought forward three of our outstanding students. Ms. Leila Craig, Ms. Brianna Hernandez, and Ms. Malia Tramell. The wonderful thing about Ms. Tramell is that, and I want to, this is just a side note, I actually taught her parents. And so it was a wonderful experience being able to come to a district and also to run across some folks who I knew. One of my biggest concerns was coming to a district where I did not know anyone and being able to have an impact. And to run into a student who I knew their parents was awesome, was part of what made my transition into Manassas City Public School so great. But I digress. This is all about you all, and we want to say thank you for everything that you all do for us. So in the way that we decided to honor you all was to put together a video that allowed our students to share some thoughts about you. And so we're going to play that. And along with that, we had so much fun doing it, we were going to even include a short bonus blooper reel.
Let's go, school board!
Happy School Board Appreciation Month!
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 To the best school board ever. Thank you, Manassas School Board.
Thank you, School Board.
Thank you, School Board.
Thank you, School Board. Congratulations, School Board, on being so great.
Happy School Board Appreciation Month and thanks for everything. Peace.
Happy- Wait, what?
Two.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Three.
The best school board ever.
I'd like to quickly echo the sentiments of all the principals who've spoken before me. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to be here. Coming from a much larger school district where you don't see the folks who really put in the work to drive the work that's done inside the schools, I want to say thank you. I don't, I didn't get to see my superintendent inside my buildings almost once a week. I didn't get to see school board members at events on a regular basis. And I didn't get a chance to have an opportunity to get to know those people personally. It's been a great pleasure to work with each and every one of you. And it is a blessing to have relationships that really mean family. It is the cornerstone of what we do at Mets Middle School. It will continue to be, and that will always be the case because we have support of you all. So thank you very much.
Mr. Morris, I want to thank you for proving that it takes a capital to do something twice that a mega would do once.
Wouldn't name twice.
Well, thank you, Mr. Morris, Ms. Milhone, and Mr. Carrington, and all of the Mets Mustangs for that wonderful video. It was great. Thank you.
Our pleasure.
Oh my goodness!
Hello, my name is Arnaz Dodevalla. And I am here with a few friends. So Mr. Witley, who leads our leadership team, and Ms. Ryder, who leads our community action athletes. I also have a few students who belong to the positive, who are called the Positive Change Ambassadors. And these are the student representatives of the PBIS Initiative at our school, as well as the Skills USA members and the National Technical Honor Society members. So I would like to invite all of you, I have a team of three here, who are going to do the entire presentation for you. So thank you again, and on behalf of the Eagle Nation and Mr. Flugrath especially, thank you for all you do.
Well, hello. Thank you so much for your time today. My name is Brianna Castro.
My name is Leslie DeRavolo.
And my name is Shayla Gonzalez.
With us, we have some amazing students from Osborne High School that helped us with our School Board Appreciation Month, Week, my bad, and our Random Acts of Kindness Week. So they're already standing here with us, and we would like to say some of their names.
With us today, we have Sarah Cahill, Nora Cahill, Madison Maxi, Kiana Mitchell, Justin McNeil, Leslie DeRavolo, Deja Hollingsworth, Brianna Castro, Shayla Gonzalez, Joe Roth, George Roth, Diego Hernandez Cruz, Gabby Montemala, and Angie Montemala.
Thank you. We would like to take this opportunity to thank all of our Manassas City School Board members and all of our parents and students and teachers from every school. February has been a very busy month for us in Osborne. What you will see in our presentation is a glimpse of our Random Acts of Kindness Week with the amazing people standing, or sitting, more like, with us. We were able to lead a wonderful spirit week that brought everybody together in friendship and kindness.
This was possible because of the hard work we put in the students from PBIS and THS, Skills USA Leadership Students, CAA, and students in the adapted learning curriculum. With the help of these excellent OHS students, we were able to put on fun games to play during all of our lunches.
We owe it to our leadership students for monitoring their activities well and making it fun for everyone, as well as our own speakers, for our clubs, for encouraging people to have fun. Thanks to the students from the adapted learning curriculum, we had yellow flowers to give out on February seventeenth, the official kindness day. The yellow flowers represent friendship and gratitude.
All right, so this is our presentation. Well, here are you guys. Lovely faces. Love to see you. Well, technology isn't on our side tonight, so.
Could you click it, please? That's okay. We'll send it to you. That's all right. I do want- So at this time, I would like to have our students give our school board, as well as if we have some extras, the audience here, some yellow flowers. We do want to thank our Ms. Megan Barber for making the yellow flowers possible. They rolled over maybe three thousand flowers to make sure that every single individual at Osborne had a yellow flower. So let's go ahead. And ladies, we have some yellow flowers that we can make sure, we can start here, this way, please. And we apologize for the technological, technology issue. We will send it to you.
Thank you so much.
Of course. Leadership and CAA have some banners and thank you cards for you as well.
Hang on to those flowers because we're gonna have you hold them up in just a minute so we can get a cool picture. But we want to thank Mrs. Dodevala and all the Positive Change Ambassadors. Thank you so much for the banner in front at Osborne. We love it. And thank you for all the work that you're doing to kind of change and improve the culture at Osborne High School and in the community all over. Thank you. Okay. Do we want to get everybody to hold up their flower? Do we want to get everybody to hold up their flower?
Oh, that's fine. I need the school board to come down here, though.
Okay.
Yeah. And I'll just stand on the stage and then everybody will just be in the picture, I guess. If I can get as many of the students to come down front, that'd be great.
Bring the posters.
Wait, stay, 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 stay.
I'm sorry, I have one more thing that I need to read.
Sorry.
Just one moment, please. "We have a submitted appreciation that I need to share with special thanks. This extra-special thank-you note sent to you today holds more appreciation than any words can say. For your amazing, for your among the nicest people I have ever known, and you'll never be forgotten for the thoughtfulness you've shown, thanks for everything, and appreciation for dedicating the Osborne High School Wrestling Matt in my name, humbly Leroy J. Williams." And then there are some gifts that Mr. Williams submitted to each of the board members that are on the dais for you. Thank you, Mr. Williams. And thank you to all of our presenters tonight. Again, our schools did an amazing job showcasing the wonderful things that are happening in their buildings. Again, thank you to our school board for all that you do to support our students and our staff. We have an amazing division doing amazing things, and I think that's evident on tonight. So, thank you, everyone. So, as many of you that can come down front, please do so, and I will get on the stage and take the photo from there. Board members, if you could kind of just stand where I can see you, please.
We've never done this before. This is exciting. This has never happened.
Yes. Everybody look this way. One, two, three. Everybody look this way. One, two, three. Thank you, school board. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
You should give me some, you know?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
May I have your attention as we prepare to continue on with our meeting? For those of you that would like to leave at this time, you are welcome to do that. We have some more spotlights to continue with, but this is a good time for you to make your exit. We'll give you a moment to do that. Pause for a brief intermission.
See my man Leon with his suit on back there? Leon, he's the custodian at Metz. He's straight back with like a tannedest suit on.
Oh, yeah! That's great.
I like it. Oh, my goodness.
Okay.
Come down.
Again, thank you, everyone, for such wonderful presentations. We're ready to move on. Thank you for your patience. Now, we are pleased to present Apple and Pear Award winners for this quarter. Apple Award winners represent members of our instructional staff in the division, and each person was nominated by one of their peers. The Pear Award winners are employees who support the teaching and learning environment in many other ways, often behind the scenes. Just like the Apple Award, our Pear Awards are nominated by their peers. Tonight, we will begin with our Apple Awards. I believe Ms. Wingfield is coming to assist with our presentation. We'll start with Baldwin Elementary, Ms. Jo McWalters. Jo McWalters is a first-grade teacher. She shares all her ideas and plans with everyone. She's willing to help and explain something that is being taught or a standard that needs to be focused on. She works really hard with her students to get them ready for the next level of learning. Congratulations, Ms. McWalters. Next, we have Jenny Dean Elementary, Dr. Sean Coffrin. I don't believe he's here tonight, but he's the ITTS here at Dean, and so we congratulate him in his absence. Next, we have Hayden Elementary, Gabriella Miranda. She's a first-grade dual-language teacher. She advocates for her students and keeps them engaged. She makes them laugh, but holds high standards for their progress. She's always smiling and supports her team and the dual-language program. Congratulations. From Round Elementary, we have Amy Dooley. Dolly? Dolly, I'm sorry. Ms. Dolly is a first-grade teacher at Round Elementary. She is a wonderful and important part of the Round family. She knows how to bring out the best in her students with her endless support and encouragement. Congratulations, Ms. Dolly. From Weems Elementary, Meredith Kousa. Is it Kousa?
Kousa.
Oh, I'm sorry. Was it Kousa? Kousa? Okay, Kousa. Ms. Kousa is a third-grade teacher. She has worked tremendously hard throughout the year to implement a targeted support block and small-group reading time crafted to her students' needs. Every student in her class has achieved measurable reading progress. Congratulations to you. Thank you. We move on to our intermediates. Baldwin Intermediate, Kristy Harris. Kristy Harris's colleagues stated, "If I were in fifth grade, I'd want Ms. Harris as my teacher. She encompasses the perfect balance in a teacher of a person that cares for her students and also holds them to high expectations. She has a constant stream of communication with her parents and is a role model for keeping a positive relationship with families." Congratulations. And from Mayfield Intermediate, Susan Webb. Congratulations to Ms. Webb. She is, she's been a fantastic educator with Mayfield for the past several years, and she's a sixth-grade teacher, so we congratulate her in her absence. From Metz Middle School, Latonya Brown. Latonya Brown is a special education teacher that is new to the intellectual disabilities classroom at Metz. She works diligently with her staff and students. She has a contagious personality, works hard, and remains optimistic even when times get bumpy. She has introduced a new transitional and social-emotional skills to her class. She's been a wonderful asset to Metz and to MCPS. Congratulations. And how fitting, our final Apple Award winner from Osborne High School is Rebecca Apple. Rebecca Apple is the ESAL Department Chair at Osborne. She goes above and beyond for the students at Osborne and the team that she serves with. For her students, she carries additional online classes and is doing night school to give the students every opportunity to graduate. Congratulations and thank you, Ms. Apple. So, those are all of our Apple Award winners, and we'll go ahead and take our group photo. Alright, now we're ready for our Pear Award winners. From Baldwin Elementary School, Kalen Newman. Kalen, Kalen Newman stepped into her position as a family liaison with a fierce passion for students and families at Baldwin Elementary. She gives 100% and is always willing to lend a helping hand in any situation. She's always looking out for the best interest of the students and families at Baldwin Elementary. Congratulations, Ms. Newman. From Dean Elementary, Antonio, Antonia Reynor Honi. Ms. Honi is an instructional assistant here at Dean. She's always willing to help. She even volunteered to dress as George Washington Carver for the entire second grade for their famous Americans unit in social studies. She is here at her school for the right reasons, the students, and for this, she deserves all the recognition. Congratulations, Ms. Honi. From Hayden Elementary, Yahara Felix Gonzalez. She's a special education instructional assistant at Hayden. She has stepped up to translate for the families there and community when needed. She is an amazing role model, always cheerful, and a great team player. Hayden says they are lucky to have her on their team. Congratulations to you. Round Elementary, we have Casey Quinn. Looks like Casey Quinn couldn't be here, but we congratulate her. She's an instructional assistant on the third-grade team at Round. From Weems Elementary, Luis Wong. Mr. Wong is a custodian and is a powerhouse to the team at Weems. If there's a problem, he is on his way to help solve it and bring light to any situation. He brings so much enthusiasm every single day, not only to fellow team members, but to parents and students. He is proud to be a Wildcat, and you can truly tell that he takes pride in that. Congratulations, Mr. Wong. From Mayfield Intermediate, Darlene Hopkins. Darlene Hopkins has been with Mayfield Intermediate for over a year, and they could not be happier that she chooses to be their bookkeeper. She efficiently processes all staff purchase requests on time, which is important, and is a good steward of MCPS funding. Yay, Mr. Hopkins. She searches for the greatest value of our, for our students to experience an optimal learning environment. On top of being a fantastic bookkeeper, she also embodies the Mayfield team spirit. Congratulations. Now, from Metz Middle School, Leon Hill. Mr. Hill is sharp tonight. You know it is award season on the red carpet. He's here for his Academy Award. Leon Hill is a custodian at Metz. He is a hard worker that works well with all staff, students, and the community. Mr. Hill shows up every single day with one of the most positive attitudes that one could have. He gives 100% every single day. Mr. Hill is very dedicated and has a tremendous work ethic. Congratulations, Mr. Hill. And our final school, Osborne High School, Michael Laverdy. Mr. Laverdy works with the Student Devices as an assistant. He is an asset to the Osborne High School tech team and OHS at large. I think it's affectionately called the Dad Desk. He is very knowledgeable and efficient with addressing student tablet concerns and does so in a manner that puts all parties at ease. That's okay. You okay? Yes, okay. He is a team player and collaborates with all of the technology team, administration, teachers. teachers, to revise practices and protocols regarding students' devices to reflect the vision of the program and the needs of stakeholders. Did you know you do all that? Congratulations, thank you. From Transportation, Laura Villa. Ms. Villa is an amazing bus driver and such an important member of the Transportation Department. She is dependable, trustworthy, organized and hardworking with a positive attitude. She has a wonderful relationship with her students and workers. Her colleagues said it's an absolute joy to ride on her midday with her preschool students. She knows each and every student by name and they all help by announcing at each stop which child is next to be dropped off with their parents, which is incredibly cute. Congratulations, Ms. Villa, and thank you so much. So, the Central Office had two nominations and an electronic vote was cast in all fairness and guess what, the results were tied. So, we have two representatives for Central Office. First, we have Johnny Arnold. Johnny Arnold is a maintenance technician for and was nominated by the Food and Nutrition Department. He has effectively resolved major equipment issues in the kitchen. Mr. Arnold has been quick to respond and expertly fixed problems, which avoids disruption in the food service operations. He is one of the hardest working guys you'll ever encounter at MCPS. At MCPS and his actions are great examples of dedication, hard work and selfless service that are core values to any organization. Congratulations, Mr. Arnold. And our final pair award tonight is Darla Edwards. Ms. Edwards is an administrative associate to and bookkeeper for the Department of Student Achievement, so we certainly congratulate her in her absence. Thank you so much to all of our pair award winners. We know that a lot of what you do is behind the scenes to support our students, but thank you so very much for everything that you do each and every day.
So, I gotta put Ms. Newman here on the spot. So, at the beginning of the year, I started getting a lot of emails from Baldwin saying that I was on the crisis team and I needed to come to the meeting. I was like, well, let me call over and see, do they really need me? And it was the wrong person. They meant Kalen Newman. So, I went over to meet her and we're talking and trying to figure out if we were related or not, and we were not. But she said, "You'll never guess what my dad's name is." So, come here, the other Kevin Newman is right here. It's nice to meet you.
Oh, proud daddy. Congratulations, everyone. Let's get that picture. Everybody good? Congratulations, thank you all so much. Chair Seberg, this concludes our spotlights and announcements for tonight.
Thank you, Al, that was wonderful, spotlights. Thank you, everyone that came tonight. I would like to introduce some dignitaries that are in the audience tonight that are staying. Looks like you're staying. Sonia Vazquez-Lunas, Councilwoman with Manassas City. Thank you for being here with us tonight. And I'd like to introduce or acknowledge Anna DiMaria. She is with Manassas Education Association. Is there anyone else? Oh, Tim. Mr. DiMaria is here, he's our Commissioner of the Revenue. Thank you, Mr. DiMaria, for joining us this evening. We have no board committee reports tonight. Happy birthday officially to Al Radford. Fifty and fabulous, right?
That's awesome. Did we not do the consent agenda? Did we do the consent agenda? Then Mr. Hollingsworth did it. You seconded it.
No, I think he consented this. The public meeting agenda.
Carl?
Right, but this is the consent agenda down here.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah, the consent items.
Citizens comments.
No committee reports.
Yep, not since our last meeting. Now it's time for citizens comments. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Please. Mr. DiMaria, would you please sign in and then please come to the...
She didn't want this?
No, she has.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
I haven't spoken at a school board meeting since I've been in the city, so I just wanted to come and talk about how at last school board meeting, we had the CTE presentation and how amazing the program is. And I just like sat in the back up here and I was just like nerding out, like wow, wow, wow. And I just want to encourage city council to allow the school board to use their funds to buy 8700 Centerville Road to help expand that program. I mean, what our kids are doing, what we're doing for our kids is amazing and I think it'd be great if city council continued that, allowed us, allowed us to continue that. So, I just want to say, thank you for everything you do for our kids and it's wonderful and amazing and that's it, thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight during citizens comments? Anyone at all? Oh!
I didn't say this, but...
All right, Tim DiMaria, Manassas City. I was watching, I watch all of your meetings and I was watching about the weapons detector and I was torn on it. I talked to you some about it. I wasn't sure where you should go, where I would go. It's not very many times that I'm thankful that I wasn't on the board at that moment. But since that time, so much more has happened and I'm very proud of this board for making the right decision. It's a hard decision and now you've got budget and it's hard decisions there too and a lot of work. And that's when you question, well, why am I doing this? Why am I up here? Then you have a night like tonight and tonight is the night that tells you why you're up here. And it is heartfelt, the appreciation that is throughout this community for the work you all do. Trust me, I know. And I know how rewarding it is on a night like tonight and how great it is for these people to come and, and speak to you and show you what's going on and it's just a fun, fun night. It's not gonna be so fun now that we start with a budget and it's not quite as exciting as the kids. But I, I just need to let you all know how much I appreciate you all and how much your community appreciates you all. And tonight is the night you need to remember. Don't remember the hard parts, remember tonight. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak tonight? All right, moving along to consent agenda, can I get a motion, please?
Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Bressia, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries 7-0. Tonight on our discussion agenda, we have some new business. Dr. Newman will be presenting, or Mr. Hawkins will be presenting the fiscal year 2324 proposed budget for the operation of Manassas City Public Schools. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Good evening. Everything that I'm going to speak about tonight is based on the governor's proposed budget. The General Assembly adjourned this past Saturday without a FY24 complete budget. A few relatively minor changes were passed, but the House and Senate Budget Conferences will be meeting in the coming weeks to reach a compromise on the budget. So, why are we here tonight? On the screen is, is the section of the Virginia Code that describes it is the superintendent's duty to prepare with the approval of the school board and submit to the governing body all the funds that they feel like we're going to need to support public education for the upcoming year. So, what we're gonna talk about tonight is the governor's proposed budget update with some historical funding trends, division student enrollment and demographic trends. We'll talk, of course, about the details of our proposed budget and then finally our upcoming budget work sessions that will be born. With the governor's proposed budget, the school board of Manassas City will get approximately $4.8 million and the city projected funding at a 3% increase from the prior year is about $1.7 million. So, all total, we'll get approximately $6.6 million in additional funding. So, out of that $6.6 million, the governor's budget has a 5% salary increase for all SOQ funded positions. SOQ stands for Standards Equality, a 1% retention bonus for all SOQ funded positions. And I'm gonna talk about the SOQ. The Standards Equality, along with the composite index, is a formula used by the state to determine its proportional contribution for the cost of public education. No school division in the state operates in adherence to the SOQs. The state provides funding to public education based on this arbitrary formula that has no relationship to the staff actually working at the school division. If MCPS were to give salary increases only to SOQ funded positions, we could have two teachers teaching in adjoining classrooms, teaching the same subject and one would get the salary increase and one would not. We believe that action would be fundamentally unfair. So, if you look at the screen, we talk about our salary increase for all staff at 5% and retention bonus of 1%, so it's $6.2 million. The total funding from the state is $4.8 million. So, you can see, we already have, have an issue in funding just with those two items. The other budget request that were received from all the department heads in the schools totaled $12.6 million. We have a remaining balance of $395,299 to meet that need. So, you can see the problem. So, is the problem that the state doesn't have the money? Do we have, does the state just not have the funding to support public education? I mean, we've heard all of that for years, that the state just doesn't have the money. Can the state afford to fund public education? You know, based on this chart, personal per capita income is in the top 25% of states in this nation. Approximately 80% of all states contribute more than Virginia on a per student basis. And, very importantly, the state currently has a $3.6 billion, that's billion with a B, dollar surplus, which could be used to support public education. So, if we're not gonna fix public education or properly fund it now, when are we? So, the next slide shows, is there, is there any data to show that the state has not funded public education over time? On this chart, the red lines show the state's actual contribution to school divisions on a per student basis. The blue lines shows what the contribution would have been if the state had just kept up with the rate of inflation. No new programs, nothing special, just the difference alone would, would have MCPS being funded and an additional $23.8 million. $23.8, remember that number. By the way, there's a similar chart that shows that the city's funding for public education over the years. The city contribution has just surpassed the amount on a per pupil basis that we had in 2006, over 14 years ago. In 2006, the city was funding at a level of $6265 or $6,265 per student. If the city had kept up with the rate of inflation during that period of time, the city's contribution today would be a little more than $9,100 per student or another $21,750,000 to together. MCPS is being underfunded just to maintain the rate of inflation over this period of time from the state and local sources totaling over $45.5 million. $45.5 million. Where would our students and staff be today with an additional $45 million? Would we have a teacher shortage? Would we have a staff retention problem? Would the quality of our education be better in Manassas City? So, by the way, recently, the city council in October sent out a citizen survey and the survey contained responses from 444 households throughout the city. And as you can see, our citizen survey also supports additional funding to education and the police were the two highest ones. So, let's go back to the state. The state is providing its share of funding for just 13.3% of all instructional aides. So, you can see out of 21,300 employed throughout the state, the state only recognizes through the SOQ funding formula 2,837 of them. They're paying their proportionate share on 2,837 and paying nothing on the other 21,000 or over 20,000 more instructional aides that are employed throughout the state. The gap in the Standards Equality funding is over $400 million for local school divisions. Only 920 assistant principals are funded by the state Standards Equality out of over 2,800 employed by school divisions. Resolving the gap when teacher and supply, declining enrollment and teacher preparations programs, the state could do more to help fund that and it could have fun ways to find, to provide teachers with support they need to minimize their burnout. I want to talk about, also, we have $25 billion, billion dollars of documented school construction and renovation needs throughout the state. This was not done by any school division. It was done, this research was done by... It was done, this research was done by JLRK, which stands for the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee, which is the investigative arm of the General Assembly. And finally, we're going to talk a little bit about the full elimination of the support cap. The support cap is a part of the funding formula that was eliminated during the Great Recession, and public education took its cut, just like everyone else, to help the state make it through rough times. But it was never reinstated. So Manassas has lost over $20 million during that period of time. Twenty million dollars, or about $1.7 million annually. So the General Assembly, the Board of Education, not the General Assembly, but the Board of Education, whose members are appointed by the Governor, recommended to the General Assembly that we fund, that the Governor fund, the items that are shown on the screen. Everything from teacher leader principal mentor programs, increased staffing ratios for English as a second language teachers, increase the assistant principal staffing standards, and by eliminating the recessionary support cap. So I told you before, that the Governor has $3.6 billion at his disposal when a state surplus. All of this together, to fix all of this for the public education, would cost 811 million. Still plenty of money available to satisfy public education's need and his goals. So let's see what the difference is. Let's look at the difference between the budgets. You can see quite a bit of difference between the Governor's budget, the House version, and the Senate version. So if you look at direct aid to schools, the Senate is requesting, or in their budget, all over a billion dollars. The Governor's requesting about a billion dollars in tax cuts. Support cap elimination, nothing in the Governor, nothing in the House budget, but about $270 million in the state. English language learners, or ELL instructors, nothing in the Governor's budget, nothing in the House, about $24 million in the Senate version. School security, nothing in the Governor's budget, and about $50 million all the way up in the Senate version. So you can see why they are still struggling now to reach compromise when they have such huge differences. This chart documents the actual per pupil contribution from all sources. In the previous slide, we discussed the state and city's per pupil contribution. This chart shows that the division's total funding on a per pupil basis has remained relatively flat throughout the years. While our funding has remained relatively flat on a per pupil basis, our enrollment has gone up during this period of time. So as a division, since 2006, our enrollment has gone up over 17%. In September, our enrollment was at 7710. Our enrollment for the entire division as of January 31st is holding steady. We're at 7707 as of January 31st. Another component of our changing enrollment is the dramatic increase in our economically disadvantaged students. This number is derived from the number of free and reduced lunch applications that were approved based on federal guidelines. The last time MCPS was allowed to collect this information was in February 2020. At that time, MCPS free and reduced lunch rate was 66.43%. Our state report card shows 46%. And the difference between 66 and 46% is because the state is measuring the number of student families that receive SNAP and TAN benefits only. Add this fact, with Manassas City Public Schools having the highest English language learners, or ELL population percentage in the state. Studies have shown that these two factors are the primary indicators that additional supports will be needed in order for students to be successful. These additional supports translate into the need for additional resources to achieve the same results as other more affluent or homogeneous school divisions. So this chart documents the number, you can see that our poverty level and our ELL population are both going up at a 45-degree angle, approximately, but going up significantly over the years. But our funding has not matched our true need, and that gap is what we'd have to close. Our children need these additional supports in order for them to be able to graduate on time and to become productive taxpayers in society. So let's talk about the budget process. This balanced 2024 Superintendent's Proposed Budget was completed as follows. We leveraged the American Rescue Plan Act funding for one more year to assist in providing needed instructional support and direct instructional personnel to all schools. We will prioritize the other positions that weren't these positions in the upcoming 25 operating fund budget. So these positions that you'll see in the slides tonight, that are under American Rescue Plan funding, will only last one more year unless we can move them in to the operating budget when we do next year's budget. We leveraged Title I funding to provide reading support teachers at all elementary levels, schools. We reallocated funding from the central office budget totaling $1.8 million to support school instruction. We did not add any additional central office positions. We repurposed all of our currently vacant positions to enhance instructional initiatives throughout the division. So let's start talking about strategic plan pillar number one, inclusive and collaborative learning environment. On the, sorry. On the screen, you'll be able to see some of the things that we've added, from adding first grade teachers and a special ed coach at Dean, all the way down, you can see where Osborne, we added two English teachers, reading support teacher, instructional facilitator, career strategy teacher, and a special education coach. So you can see all that we did at the schools. Under the American Rescue Plan funding, we have in elementary schools, we have one instructional facilitator at each school, Baldwin Intermediate, one instructional facilitator, and one reading specialist, Mayfield Intermediate, two reading support teachers, Metz, one reading support teacher, and Osborne, one instructional facilitator. And all of our, in Title I funding, to put reading support teachers at all elementary schools. Under pillar number two, culture of caring, we extended the contract for the clinical nurse coordinator from 10 to 11 months. We increased funding for school psychology internships. We're providing additional funding for special ed contractual behavioral supports, and we're providing funding for school nursing programs. Under American Rescue Plan Act funding, we're retaining CNAs at selected schools. Under pillar three, quality workforce, all staff will receive a salary increase, a 1% retention bonus for all staff. We'll be hiring an additional textile support specialist, and we're transferring the grants operation technician away from the American Rescue Plan Act back into the operating fund. Under pillar four, strong family and community partnerships, we increased the ESOL contribution to English as a second language line, as a translation line, extending the contract for work-based learning specialists from 11 to 12 months. And we're providing additional operational funding to the performing arts, and provide additional funding for PSAT, SAT, and CTE testing. So what are some of our long-term needs? These are some of the things that we need to be discussing and thinking about as we go forward, from FY24 and beyond. We need to have a long-term staff compensation strategy. What I mean by that is that we are, have to stay in the marketplace for our teachers. Without a well-paid, well-qualified teacher, we have nothing in our classrooms. They are the most important asset we have in any school division, in any classroom, and we need to figure out a way to be able to stay in the marketplace and be competitive for our licensed staff. We have current American Rescue Plan grant-funded positions that are only going to last one more year, and we need to be able to find a way to get those into the upcoming budget. Not so much in FY24, although we may have some additional funding when the General Assembly adjourns with the budget, but in the future years, in FY25 and beyond. And our long-running problem of reducing your bus tier system from five tiers to four. So what does our operational budget look like? About a little over 88% of the budget is allocated to salary and benefits. About 3.4% to materials and supplies, about 5.5% for purchased services and others. This, for a school division to have 88% of their budget dedicated to salary and benefits is typical for public education. It's nothing different in Fairfax, or Prince William, or other places around, all school divisions roughly have this breakdown in their budget. How is our money budgeted? Our money is budgeted primarily at the school level. Almost 80% of our funds are budgeted at the school. You can see where the other breakdown is, from information technology to transportation, health, and student services, all of these functions support the schools. They all feed back into the schools on a daily basis, but almost 80% of our funding is budgeted directly at the school level. So upcoming, we're going to have budget work sessions on March the 7th, March the 16th, March the 21st, and on March the 14th, we'll have a public hearing on the proposed budget, where we hope to receive some feedback from our community. Our school board is scheduled at this time to adopt a budget on March 28th, and we're scheduled to present to City Council on April the 12th. All of these dates, well, the school board adoption budget date is what it is right now, but we might need to change that at some point, depending on what the General Assembly does, and whether they can come to a compromise. We've had years where we didn't have the budget until, General Assembly didn't adopt a budget till as late as June. So we may have to adopt a budget in March, present a budget in April to City Council, but come back and revise the budget again whenever the General Assembly reaches a compromise or adopts a budget. And we will, some of our board members who've been here in the past have, we have gone through this. We'll keep revising the budget based on the best available data that we have at the time. So that concludes the presentation for tonight. Are there any questions, concerns, or comments?
Of course. Dr. Newman.
So, board, I just want to let you know that I am now passing this budget on to you. This will conclude our portion of the budget. It now becomes the school board's budget between now and March 28th. You have a lot to consider, with a lot of unknowns. You don't know what we're going to get from the state, what that final number will be. We're still waiting to hear from the city. We put 3% in because that's what we received in the last couple of years, but we do not know that percentage. I know I met with my superintendent advisory group, and of course, we talked about compensation for staff. We are in the people business. As Andy said, 88% of this budget will go to the wonderful people that educate our kids. And I know Andy used the word "teachers," but everyone in this division plays a valuable role in what we do for our students. And so not only do we need to stay in the marketplace for teachers, but we also need to be in the marketplace for all positions, so we can keep our talent here, instead of them coming here, training here, and then leaving us to go to Prince William or Fairfax. So, you know, between now and March 28th, you have a difficult task, but know that myself, the individuals sitting out there today, our principals, we're here with you. We're all in this together, but know that we do have a very difficult task ahead of us.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Vice Chair Stevens.
So, Mr. Hawkins, thank you for putting this together for us. It feels like we talk about the same thing every year, and that same thing revolves around the SOQ and the composite index. I just have a couple of questions. So, the $6.6 million that is on Slide 4, that's what we're projecting over last fiscal year.
Yes, ma'am.
But in order to fully fund the 5% salary increase for all staff that was mandated by the General Assembly, and the 1% retention bonus for all staff, we need to, at the local level, contribute how much?
So that amount for those two items alone will be $6.2 million.
So it's basically almost half.
Almost half.
Yeah. Because if, because if the total, okay. So explain Slide 5 to me.
Slide 5 shows that our total funding is $6,595,000.
Okay.
Our salary increase alone, and our retention bonus for all staff, is $6.2 million. So we have about $395,000 remaining, and we had budget request, or from, our department heads, from our school principals, of approximately $13 million more than the $395. So as we go forward, you can see why we had to have a need of leveraging our American Rescue Plan Act funds, moving money that we had allocated in other places, such as the central office, over approximately $1.8 million, moving those funds back into trying to help improve the quality of instruction for our students. We spent many hours trying to rearrange and move things around within our division, assessing our true needs to be able to provide funding to address some of these needs, and be able to provide funding that we've talked about tonight.
Can you explain for us what the budget requests are generally? Are they the needs of the individual schools and central office and transportation?
Sure, they are. They are, I mean, everything you could think of, from transportation, maybe additional fuel cost, or from the principals, but the need for additional instructional personnel, additional support personnel. It runs the gamut from, all over the board, from having more English language learners, teachers, to having more support for our students, to providing, being able just to have the basic functions to run the school division, such as fuel for our buses.
Now, with the ARPA positions, I know you've told us this before, how many positions were created with ARPA funds?
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three positions. And so the ARPA funds were made available for two years. And we are, and maybe I'm, I mean this down a little bit, I'm not sure, but so what we are doing is we are continuing those positions, but we are reallocating and finding funds and finding ways that we can continue to fund those positions because of their importance to our school community and to student success, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
But, next fiscal year, 2025, we're going to be back in the same place without that additional funding.
The grant will expire at the end of next year.
Okay. Slide 11. When we look at Slide 11, it talks-
I want to correct something.
Yes.
We were not able to put all 63 of them in the budget.
Okay.
So we tried to save as many as we could, but not all of them were.
So that brings us to a new question. What happens to those people who were employed in some of those positions? So that brings us to a new question. What happens to those people who were employed in some of those positions?
Those that we will not be able to keep in the budget, which we are not really sure what that is until we get some more numbers. We will have conversations with those individuals.
Okay.
We believe that we were going to have enough turnover, enough vacancies within the division that we'll be able to transition those individuals into current vacant positions. We don't anticipate losing very many of those, those people if they choose to stay with us. Depending on their qualifications, their specialty, right?
So that's a pretty serious situation, I would say. Okay. On slide eleven, when we look at slide eleven, have we attempted to do some of these things at the local level? I feel like, have we been, been able to increase our staffing ratios for English as a second language teachers and reading specialists and school counselors? Is that something that we have tried to do or we are doing at the local level?
Yes, we absolutely have. Every year, we've, we've added more English language learning teachers, but our population of students who require those services has also increased each year. Slide eleven just documents how much underfunding we have received from the state that has been documented by outside sources, not from Manassas City Public Schools, but from the governor's appointed Board of Education who's, works for the DOE. So these are, these are unquestioned shortfalls and cuts that have been made to public education over the years that have not been restored. And so if you're not going to fix the SOQ funding formula, maybe we should go back and at least fix these areas that were primarily cut from the education budget when the state had felt fallen on hard times during the Great Recession and have not been reinstated over the la, since two thousand and eleven. So we're in two thousand and twenty-three now, so all of that time, ten, twelve years, we have not been, funding has not been reinstated. And now the governor has a perfect chance with a three point six billion dollar surplus to fix these issues. And we, we are hopeful that the General Assembly will be able to come to a compromise to at least fund public education. And I think there's enough money there to solve, to, to reach both goals, to give tax cuts if that's what the governor's priority is, but also to fund public education because we need about eight hundred and eleven million dollars out of the three point six billion dollars that's available.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Andy. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions from the board, please? Mrs. Williams?
I have a question, a clarification question. I know we're going to have a lot of work to do, and I really, really appreciate all the hard work that you all have already put into this budget. And then to me and my colleagues, we're going to have a lot of work to do going forward. When, when COVID hit and we were getting all these hard funds, we knew we were going to have to make sure, we knew we would be here today. Well, maybe not today, but next year for sure. So the dialogue will continue, I'm sure. I want to point out a couple of things. First, in reference to Mr. Hawkins' budgeting, we have gotten year after year after year flawless audits, excellent audits. Our budgeting, we work hard. We've got professionals that work here, and I appreciate everything you do. And that is proven by documents that we see annually about what you do for this school and how you take care of us fiscally. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Clarification question.
Sure.
On slide fifteen, you, you mentioned this, and I just want to make sure I clarify it. The state calculates free and reduced lunch. There is a calculation from the state where, where they will allow the entire school to have free lunch if we meet what criteria?
Okay, so I, I made a point about, we might have some viewers tonight. Some of you may go on to this, the school report card and look out there and see that they're going to say that our economically disadvantaged population is not sixty-six percent, but relative, but forty-five percent, okay? And I wanted to explain the difference. So forty, the forty-five percent that's shown on the state report card is documenting only the parents that have applied for and received TANF and SNAP benefits. But when we, the last time that we went out and had, took free and reduced lunch applications, sixty-six, over sixty-six percent of our student population qualified under federal guidelines. So we believe that number is at least sixty-six percent today. It's probably much, we believe it's higher than that today. But since we have stopped charging for breakfast, lunch, and dinner meals in Manassas, we are not allowed to collect that data anymore. So there's a, there's a program called Community Eligibility Program. It's called CEP for short. CEP provides increased funding to public school divisions and incentivizing them to offer free breakfast, lunch, and dinner meals. And the, the schools that qualify, their parent, their student population, their parents has to be in excess of forty percent of their, of their student body, has to be receiving SNAP and TANF benefits. So all of our schools now exceed the forty percent mark and all of our, so we're receiving CEP funds as we speak. So that's helping us afford to not being able to charge the students for these meals.
Okay, thank you. Lisa asked a lot of the questions. Oh, one question, and I'm not sure if you can answer this or perhaps Mr. Kefeller can answer this or the appropriate person. School psychology internship, will you explain more about that?
So we, we always have a hard time having school psychologists being employed in the school division. Every school division does, where Manassas is not any different. One of the things that we've done is we're, we provide internships for students who come straight out of college who've graduated with their psychology degrees. But all the school divisions around us offered more of a stipend than we did, more of a supplement or paid internship than we did. So what we're doing now is basically getting back into the marketplace. We have a lot of school psychologists or students that have come out of college who want to stay here in Manassas City and want to work with our students, but they can get twice as much money working for Fairfax or Prince William or someone else. So what we're actually doing is adding more money to those internship funds so that we can be able to keep the psychologists that we have, that we can get from the schools right now.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, I'd just like to comment, I'd like to invite the public, the public will be, we will, we do want to hear from the public about our budget. I'd like to see the public, we'd like to invite you to our schools, right? Come see our schools and then come comment about our budget. I would love to hear your thoughts and suggestions, and that's all I've got. Thank you.
They'll have that opportunity on, on March fourteenth when we have the public hearing.
Yes. Anyone else? Mrs. Bresia?
I've got a, thank you, Andy, for all of this. Thank you for everybody who worked on this. I know that this is not easy and that there's been a lot of ups and downs this budget cycle in particular, so thank you. A lot of this is, you know, school board budget newbie question, so please bear with me. I'm, as, so the way I understand it is our state funding is determined by the arbitrary number of SOQ positions that the state has calculated plus the local composite index, which is, my question is about the local composite index. That is not the amount of funding that is actually provided by the locality. That is the amount of money the state thinks the locality is capable of providing. Am I correct in that?
So the composite index is a formula that's used to measure the locality's ability to pay, okay? How much can the locality afford? And it's based on, it's a complex formula, but it's based primarily on home values, sales tax in the area. It's, it's several factors, but primarily those two things. But it's, it's a measurement to determine how much a locality can afford to pay. So the higher your composite index, in other words, if your composite index is point eight zero, then you would be in the Arlington Falls Church realm. And we're at, I think, point thirty-six, something like that. So the lower you get, the, the poorer or the less ability that the formula has determined that the locality has to fund public education.
I see. It doesn't actually go back to historical data of what the locality has actually provided? It's just, what are the home values? What should your tax receipts be?
No, they have a, they do have something called minimum required effort. So there is a, there is a floor that the, that the locality must support. But the composite index doesn't determine that. The composite index is just trying to determine the, how wealthy a community is, its relative wealth against other counties within the state of Virginia. And it's, it's redid, done every two years.
Gotcha. My other question was, you've mentioned that we are no longer collecting the data on free and reduced lunch because of the universal free lunch program that we're offering.
Yes.
How are we maintaining, but we're still Title I, right? How are we maintaining our Title I status if we don't have the free and reduced lunch data?
So we're using the data that we have at the last time we had it, right? I mean, so we're, we're reporting that. I don't know, is someone from here, can you answer that, Kurt?
So ma'am, hi, my name's Kurt Long.
You got to come down to the microphone.
He's coming.
Good evening. My name's Kurt. I'm Director of Federal Programs and Family Engagement. So as of last year, when I wrote the grant, I was allowed by the State Department to use the data that we had previously reported for free and reduced lunch. This year, when we run the grant, I'm not going to be able to do that. I have to use the Community Eligibility Program data.
So the Community Eligibility Program data is collected how and where?
The Community Education Program data is the, is the number of parents within our division who are receiving TANF or SNAP benefits. So when I say that we have sixty-six percent on free and reduce, that would qualify for free and reduced lunch back when we were doing it, the percentage on the school report card that you see on the DOE website will show us approximately, I want to say fifty-three percent. So it's going to look like a difference. I'm reporting sixty-six and the state's reporting fifty-three. So I wanted to make sure that you understood the difference. So going forward, if he has to use SNAP and TANF data, our, the free and reduced lunch data will not be at sixty-six percent anymore. It will be at, at the number of parents who receive SNAP and TANF benefits.
It would be at the fifty-three then.
It'll be at the fifty-two.
All right, well, health, we're still north of the forty percent cutoff, so we're not, we're not going to run into any trouble there. I knew you wouldn't drive us into a wall, but I was just, just checking. The, so that answers, that answers those questions. My other questions are, so on slide seventeen, we talked about leveraging the American Rescue Plan funding for one additional year. And I was just curious about the word leveraged in that context, because sometimes the word leveraged means we used the funding or sometimes leveraged means we borrowed against the funding, so.
So when we, when we were initially putting the budget together for the American Rescue Plan Fund Act, we, we had planned, or we were projecting that we were going to use or we're going to exhaust all of that grant by this coming June, June twenty-three, which means we wouldn't have anything left over for next year. But we did have vacancies. We did have turnover. We had people that we couldn't hire that were in the grant. We never, that were, the position stayed vacant. So what we've done is rewritten the grant or amended the grant and saying, okay, when we first initially submitted the grant, we were going to go this way with these, with these staff. Now we're going to amend the grant, and we are going to bring these other staff in to help make our, to meet our basic true needs that we have right now. We've sat down with the instructional staff, and Mr. Kefeller has gone through and said, okay, prioritize what you really got to have. And we took those funds and we tried to move as many of them as we possibly could into the operating fund. Anything that was left, we tried to move it in and fully exhaust the American Rescue Plan, Plan Fund through next year. It's not to say that those positions are not important and we don't want to keep them. We certainly do, and we will try to address those issues when we do the budget next year for FY twenty-five.
Okay. I think I'm, I'm starting to put it together. Thank you. I wanted to ask more about the recession era support position cap. I don't really know the history of that, so.
So there was, so when, under the SOQ funding formula, they take the number of teachers that you, or they take the number of students that you have, and they divide it by thirty. So if you have seventy-seven hundred students, you divide it by thirty. That's approximately how many teachers they're going to pay for under the SOQ funding formula. They also had a formula out there for the number of support people. When I say support people, I'm talking about anybody who's not a teacher.
IT accountants, yes.
Right, IT accountants, facilities guys, whatever. And they would say, you're going to, your, your division should have a hundred, hundreds of those people, right? If you have a hundred and fifty of them, fine, that's your choice. Fifty of them will be a hundred percent paid by you, and the state will pay its proportionate share on the original hundred that's under the formula. Now, over the years, the support cap, certainly during the recession era cuts, was eliminated altogether. They're not funding anything for support staff. And so that's really hurt the school divisions, not only Manassas. We can document one point seven million through, annually, revenue cut to Manassas City. But it's been multi-millions of dollars statewide. Just imagine, if it cuts Manassas City one point seven million, how much money is Prince William and Fairfax and other school divisions losing? They're probably twenty or thirty million dollars a year in, in lost state revenue. So that's how the support cap was, was originally intended to not only, the SOQs help support licensed personnel, and the support cap was the, the state's effort at one time to provide additional funding for all of the support staff in our schools.
Gotcha. All right. So for my next question, I wanted to go to the graph on slide seven. Because I had some questions on that one, which first of all, I was comparing the numbers here to the numbers on slide sixteen, and I could see, and there was, you know, the state per pupil funding on slide sixteen, seven million fifty-nine for twenty twenty-two, but then I look at twenty twenty-two, and the nominal funding is six point seven. So that's, I was wondering what the-
So on slide, on slide seven, I'm showing you the statewide numbers. How much, it's not Manassas City specific.
I see, okay.
Showing you the statewide average on, on total. On slide sixteen, I'm showing you Manassas City-specific numbers. So Manassas City's doing a little better than average in the state as far as state funding on a per pupil basis. But the premise of it is that the state is not keeping up with, even with the rate of inflation. Manassas City, unlike all other school divisions in the state of Virginia, are severely underfunded at all levels, but certainly by the state.
Right. Well, the, and the other question I had, I noticed twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four were included on here, but we don't have, we don't know what the inflation is going to be yet for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-three. So we don't know how much to adjust it up or down, so I was wondering where that came from.
I didn't, these charts, I didn't produce these charts because I've, I've been accused in the past of, of being biased. So these, these charts came from independent sources outside for me, from Virginia Association of School Superintendents, the V S B A, and others.
All right. Well, I had- All right. Well, I have, you can look at my notations for this chart. So now that I know that this is from the Virginia Association of Superintendent, I'm going to let you off the hook.
I'll find, I'll get you, I'll get you the true source tomorrow.
Thank you. That's all from me.
Mrs. Spall, you have a question or statement?
Yes, just very quickly, touching on what Ms. Williams said. And for anybody who may still be watching from home, I just want to reiterate that I realize our job is to state the needs of our school system and in some cases lobby to secure funding for those needs. But as state and city residents may be watching, I just would like to go over a couple points that if they rub you the wrong way, you know, there are things that you can do as private citizens to, to help the effort that we're trying to elaborate on here. And, and a couple of the points that I just thought were very salient. You know, if you feel that citywide, if per pupil funding, you know, remaining the same from two thousand and six, you know, is not acceptable, there's, there's something that you can say about that. And if at one-tenth of the staff being recognized through our SOQs, you know, is not acceptable, that's something that you can have a say about. You know, I don't want to make it a long speech tonight, but reducing bus tears, you know, negates the need for kids to be at bus stops at six fifteen in the morning. So there are very practical things that we are trying to address or have already stated that will not be able to be addressed. And as citizens, you do have the right to have a say. Whether that looks like writing a state legislator, whether it looks like addressing our council, or it's, you know, writing to us to show support, or just coming on March fourteenth to speak up, it is your right as citizens to have a say. And we would appreciate, you know, if, if these things don't seem right to you, that you use your voice.
Thank you, Mrs. Spall. Great comments. Mrs. Williams, did you have another question?
Yes. I just wanted to share to those listening. This is across the nation. Third grade has been hit the hardest with literacy across the entire nation. And I believe our team here has been really responsible at, at our Title I funds and really just pushing those funds towards our elementary schools because that's really where we need them at that third grade level for sure. So I just wanted to share that. And then, Mrs. Spall, you said something that triggered my memory. Now I forgot. But anyway, I just wanted to share, share that I just think we are doing, we, we have a great team here and we are doing the best for our students because that's what every single one of us up here are here to do. We've got a lot of work ahead of us, but we'll get there.
Yeah, this is just the first time we've really seen this and discussed it. And we will have some more options coming up. Mrs. Brooks?
Thank you. A quick question. Based, you know, we talk about the formulas and the index and, you know, the state gives us a percentage. And they assume that we also get another percentage from our local city council monies. At this time, is the city of Manassas giving us what the state thinks it should be giving us? You can get back to me on it.
I don't know. It's hard, it's hard to answer.
And I'll answer. So the, the answer to that is yes, because they have the, what is it, Andy?
Minimum requirement.
The minimum requirement. But of the hundred and thirty.
Two.
Two school divisions, not one is funded at that rate because you couldn't survive with that amount.
The charts that we showed tonight, when you see eighty, over eighty percent of the instructional aides in the state are not, have any state funding, any proportionate share of the state funding, that goes to show you how out of date the SOQ funding formula is. The SOQ funding formula and the composite index have nothing to do with the staff that's employed. It's not a factor in the, in the calculation at all. Even though the state has all of that data and they know how much money we spend on instructional aides and principals and how many we have, what's happening in the real world, what's happening in our schools today has no bearing on how many positions that they're going to fund. Seems to me that you would start with where you are today and determine what your true needs are and your funding level. And the state would help, you know, pay their proportionate share. But it's set up by some arbitrary formula that has no relationship with who's actually working in the school division right now. And that leaves the locality having to pay a hundred percent of the cost for anything over the formula that was done over thirty years ago.
Ms. Brooks, I just want to add, I know we have Ms. Vasquez Luna here with us today. And I know, just like the school board has a very tough job between now and the twenty-eighth, the, the city also has a lot of pressure on them. I know there's a fifteen percent pay increase for Prince William Police and they have to fund that. But just know that come April twelfth, we're going to ask you for some more too. We want to partner with the city on this. We understand that we're not the only priority. But we are going to advocate for what we need for our students. But then, again, partner with you and the council and the mayor so that everyone in the city will be able to prosper. So I just want to thank you for being here tonight and know that come April twelfth, we'll start our partnership as well.
Thank you, Dr. Newman. Anything else for tonight? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Thank you.
We look forward to discussing this further at all our next meetings. Okay, next up on our agenda is discussion of Dean Replacement Project. I think we have talked about naming this new Dean School Project. And the Educational Support Committee met a couple weeks ago. And Mrs. Spall chairs that committee, and I'd like you to go ahead and share with us your committee's recommendations.
Thank you, Chair. I've written my comments just to make sure I don't forget anything. Educational Support Committee met on two fourteen to discuss options for new Dean Elementary. I am pleased to report that the committee is recommending to the board that the design that seems best suited to the project is one that we already own in Baldwin Elementary slash Intermediate. The committee recommends to the board constructing and equipping Dean in a similar fashion to Baldwin Intermediate and Elementary, using some lessons learned along the way. The committee has looked at several student grade models, but feels that the current pre-K to four model best serves the character and uniqueness of Manassas and should remain the same. This recommend, this recommendation negates the need for boundary changes and keeps pre-K with siblings during an important transition time in their lives. Again, the committee feels this recommendation speaks to the unique opportunities MCPS is able to offer its students. The committee is also recommending to the board that staff work with city staff to move up construction dates from seven-one-twenty-six to a minimum of one-one-twenty-six with an optimum start date of seven-one-twenty-five. With school board agreeing on this decision, an updated timeline will be the next priority. The due date for this timeline would be as accelerated as possible given obvious new but exciting information. And thank you for the opportunity to chair this committee.
Thank you. So let's, can we talk, that was basically three things. We've got the grade configuration, design plans, and the construction timeline start date.
That's correct.
So let's take the first one, grade configurations. And you recommend pre-K through?
Four.
Four. And that's what it is at now.
Correct.
If anybody on this board and people out in the audience, if you've been a part of redistricting or changing around the grades of a school, you know that that is a very challenging thing to do. People are very passionate about where their kids, they've dreamed of their kids going to school. And I, I think that's a good recommendation. Are there any other comments from the board?
I wanted to make just a quick comment. The discussion on the grade configuration for the new Jenny Dean has been going on since twenty-twenty-one. And we've discussed it quite a bit, looking at the pros and cons of all the different options. And at the end of the day, it really came down to keeping that pre-K through four, that it would cause less disruption for our students and our community as a whole. So this is not a brand-new conversation. This is a conversation that we've been, that's been ongoing for quite some time.
Thank you for pointing that out, Vice Chair. Any other comments about grade configuration? Okay, let's go into design plans, using the Baldwin design plans. Any comments or discussion on that, Ms. Vice Chair Stevens?
Yes. Correct me if I'm not correct, Ms. Spall. We were happy overall with the configuration with the building plans for Baldwin. And already having the building plans does create a cost savings, correct?
That is correct.
So that is one of the things that we took into consideration was that cost savings by repeating the same building design. And other school divisions do that as well.
We did, did visit some other school districts that do that. You know, we saw the benefit of not making one school much more desirable than, than the next new school. And we felt that the design, at least on the outside, we know we have some lessons learned. It's not going to be the exact same building. But owning the plans saved time and money.
Thank you. And Baldwin, the plans for Baldwin, that's an award-winning design plan, correct? I'm trying to think of the agency that issued it. Dr. Newman has it.
He's looking it up.
Something like American Education.
It goes the Outstanding Design and Combined Level, whoops, I turn this off. Combined Level Schools Award in twenty-eighteen, American Schools and University.
American Schools and University. Okay, that's good. Award-winning design. Any other comments about the design? Mr. Hollingsworth?
Will the faculty or community be involved in, in the design of Jenny Dean, keeping it in the spirit of recognizing Jenny Dean?
My discussions with Dr. Newman today were that we're agreeing on, you know, the exterior and some basic things about the interior, but we do have some options on the inside. And we will be soliciting some input.
I also want to add, just like we've discussed the configuration since twenty-twenty-one, we've been talking about finding ways to incorporate the spirit of, of Ms. Jenny Dean in the new building somehow, which would take some community meetings of those that have a special affinity for the school to make sure that we are honoring Ms. Jenny Dean properly.
Thank you for that. Mrs. Brooks, did you have a question? I called on you.
I just want to reiterate that the, the idea of taking the Baldwin plans that we already own is both fiscally sound, but also, as Ms. Spall mentioned, you know, helps our timeline. But we definitely have, have the desire to make it still Jenny Dean and its own school, not just a Baldwin replica. But it's Jenny Dean with that feel and, and her memory. So that's definitely something that I think we all agree is a priority. It won't look like, you know, you walk down the street and you're still in the same spot. It's going to look like Jenny Dean.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. Mrs. Bresia?
Carl actually asked my question. I'm just going to buttress Carl's question with my own comment and observation. I recently had the opportunity to spend a whole day at Baldwin Elementary. And they had a lot to say about the, how they were experiencing life, especially in the kindergarten. That's where I was. I was in a kindergarten class. They had a lot to say about how much they were using that ELA space slash not using that space. They wish that they had more, they had more privacy to address student discipline concerns. If a child has to be removed from the class and talked to, it's all these windows. So everybody in the entire grade can see, oh, Johnny's being pulled out of class again. You know, so just buttressing Carl's concern with my own comment and observations that getting that community input and making sure we formalize a way to onboard those comments and lessons learned will be to our benefit, which I know, of course, is already on the docket, but wanted to add my support to that.
Thank you. And I'll also comment saying that when we built Baldwin, we still have several staff members that were involved in that that are very familiar with the building, very familiar with the design, and are able to help us through this next one. If that's what's officially decided. Are we ready to move on to the next one? Okay, construction timeline. Can you again review those dates again? The groundbreaking.
Oh, these from this report? Yes. So today, we were reminded that there is a timeline available to us. And that timeline also seems to support, you know, already, this is not a novel idea, but this is still a recommendation of our committee. We, we wanted, we need to deliver by, in twenty-twenty-six. We want to deliver seven-one, you know, before kids go back, seven-one-twenty-six. The way that it happened with Baldwin, you know, it happened at the very end of XX year. I don't remember. So, you know, our want is seven-one, and we know it takes sixteen months to build. We're recommending at minimum, starting one-one-twenty-six. But we believe that seven-one-twenty-five is really the ideal start date. And that does present some budgeting differences than what we have right now.
Do you have a comment?
I think everyone will agree that the sooner the faster.
Yep.
We could build Dean, everyone will be happy. It's going to take some work with our city partners, talking to Mr. Pate and his team, because it will depend on when the city is able to go out with the bonding process to, to get the funds to, to start. So again, a lot of conversations will happen.
Sure.
To, to get there or do the best we can to make sure kids are starting the school year in the new building and not having to start here and then move in the middle of the year. So that is a priority for us.
Very good. And, let's see, what am I supposed to say? The timeline that Mrs. Spall was referring to is a timeline that we gave city council. We offered to them in November, at the November seventeenth joint meeting?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, November twenty-one. And, I mean, that timeline's still out there on board docs if anybody would like to look at it. Any other comments?
Yes, just a quick one. I remember not too long ago, and I think some long-term MCPS employees and some former school board members may recall that once upon a time, not that long ago, building a new Jenny Dean was pie in the sky. And it wasn't something that was realistically a plan. In fact, I remember attending meetings where the conversation was, we can't build Jenny Dean. And now we're actually talking about moving up the start date for construction. So we've really come a long way. And at no point along that path have we veered from our goal of building a new Jenny Dean that meets the needs of our students, our staff, and our community as a whole.
Thank you, Vice Chair Stevens. Okay, so any other conversation? Okay, we are going to move this forward to a vote. We'll have a vote on it. It'll be on our action agenda on March fourteenth. Yes. Also, go ahead. You can.
Also at the March fourteenth meeting, Downey and Scott, who we have.
Architects.
Signed a contract with, will be providing an estimate for the cost to build Dean. So that will happen during the March fourteenth meeting.
Thank you.
I did have one additional stupid question maybe. What exactly would we be voting on on March fourteenth? The grade configuration, the?
Yes, grade configuration.
The design.
And the construction timeline.
Yes.
Okay, so those three elements are the vote, okay.
We'll have to kind of wordsmith the wording on the construction timeline because it's not just up to us, it's also up to city council, but we'll figure that out. We'll figure it out. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and move along. We don't have. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and move along, we don't have any other business on our discussion agenda, and next is board member comments. I'd like to go first to our student representatives, Ms. Island.
Oh, okay, sorry. I'd like to say thank you to the teachers, students, parents, and principals for the speeches, videos, and presentations that we saw tonight. It was a great way to finish off February. I'd also like to say thank you to the school board, Chair Seberg, Superintendent Newman, Ms. Garza, along with Mr. Hollingsworth, for all they've, for all they've done. Oh, good night, sorry.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I would first just like to say thank you to all those who had their presentations during the spotlights and joined them on the last day of February by saying Happy School Board Appreciation Month. And I would also like to say congratulations to all the Apple and Pear Award winners. I would also like to point out that for those students who are at Osborne and have plans of going into college, please pay attention to the newsletters that Ms. Violet sends out each month to find scholarships and other resources, not only for those who are applying for college, but also for students in general. And I would also like to say happy belated birthday to Alicia. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. BP. Mrs. Ball, comments this evening?
Yes, I just wanted to say that one other thing about the Educational Support Committee is that we received a presentation from RRMM Architects, who worked with school staff regarding a preliminary design to address an obvious safety concern at Osborne. So my committee members, Ms. Williams and Ms. Brooks and I, you know, agreed that the recommendation of that committee is to forward the information on the enclosure to the full board, as it is a pertinent and timely safety discussion, to have in light of the fact that our detectors are being implemented as we speak. So I look for this enclosure plan to make it to upcoming CIP presentation sometime in the future. I wanted to thank all of the kids I've got, Sierra and Mason from Baldwin, and Juliana and Abby, and Annabelle from Dean, and Billy Kay, Isabella Felipe from Hayden, and I don't want to miss, I guess, I'll do at least the elementary schools, Jay and Niles, and Ania from Round, and Emma Sebastian and Amalia, there's a bunch, so, and everybody else. There's a whole bunch of people that recognized us tonight, and it was wonderful to see, and I really thank them all. Also, Mr. Williams for his special gift to us, he's been a very special gift to us already. And I guess that'll be all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ball. Mrs. Williams?
Thank you, Mrs. Chair, and I want to keep this really short, because it's been a long night, and we have a long night ahead of us. But I want to thank everybody, all the spotlights tonight, every, I want to shout out to every single one of my board members, thank you, thank you for all you do. And I cannot go out, go, go away tonight without giving you a shout-out. Thank you, you two young ladies, you are always up here, very professional, I love your comments, so thank you for all that you do. And then I'm going to close with this, this statement, I love this statement. Our public education system is the most productive supplier of human needs and economic justice. And until this country, throughout every state, our federal government or state governments recognize that, we're, we're always going to, we're always going to be challenged, always. So I just think we all need to put more and more importance on public education, because it's extremely important to this nation as a whole. Thank you.
Absolutely, Mrs. Williams, thank you. Mr. Hollingsworth?
Thank you, Chair Seberg. I just want to congratulate all the Pear, Apple and Pear, or anyone who was recognized today, all the presentations today mean a lot to me personally. Being on the school board is a tough task, to say the least, and I want to recognize all my, all my peers here on, on the board, and, but I just want to take a minute to thank the students. You know, you filled me up with a lot of pride, and, you know, you make it worthwhile to come out here and, and do our best. So to any detractors out there who think that the school board isn't functioning in a certain way, I think today was a highlight to show that, you know, we're doing the best we can with what we're dealing with, and our hearts and our passions go out to each teacher, principal, and student. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Brooks?
Thank you, Chair. I do want to start with saying, you know, congratulations to all of the Apple and Pear Award winners. It's just always so great to see what wonderful staff and teachers we have in our, you know, teaching our community and taking care of our, our students. Thank you for all the appreciation given for the school board, thank you to my fellow school board members, and thank you to everyone for, you know, all that appreciation that you've shown, but also for giving us, you know, a chance to have a glimpse and sharing your schools with us. I did want to say, you know, as same as Ms. Williams, education is the foundation of our society, our community, our children, it's, it's what makes them who they are, it's what molds them. And our public schools are a very high priority for, for meeting that need, and I hope that we all can come together and make sure that, that our schools and our city are getting what they need to provide the education that our staff and teachers really are there to give them. I also did want to say that next week, Manassas Ballet Theater will be having their education outreach program. There will be about two hundred avid students from, avid or avid?
Avid.
Avid, that's what I thought. Avid students from Osborne coming, and we're going to be able to bring them in and show them all around the Hilton, and the opportunities that they can have in the sense of career choices and career fields, in the theater and arts production fields, and, you know, different pathways they can take, whether it be a trades or a college-type program, and then they'll get to watch excerpts of a ballet and, and see all of that aspect of, you know, just being a dancer or a performer, so with that, you know, have a great start of March, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. Mrs. Bressia?
Thank you, thank you. Congratulations to our Apple and Pear winners, thank you to our school community for an amazing set of presentations. When I saw on the agenda, it was School Board Appreciation Month, I thought we were going to get like, you know, a little hand wave and a clap and move along. I was not expecting such a fantastic show, so really, thank you for that, what a treat. I would also like to use my school board member time today to request, to request in addition to our next meeting's agenda, I would like us to consider revising our operating protocol with respect to our agenda and agenda packet to match the city's current protocol. Currently, the city makes their agenda and complete agenda packet available to the public the Tuesday before their Monday meetings, which is six days' notice. Currently, we make our agenda available at the Thursday before our Tuesday meetings, and our agenda packet items are generally not available until noon the day of our school board meetings. And I make this request at this juncture for a few reasons. The first being, we recently experienced the benefit of such a long notice period. We had a city council motion come through that was directly pertinent to us, and because of this operating protocol that they follow, we were given six days to organize ourselves and consult our lawyer, and, you know, talk to the members of the city council. I really appreciated having that six-day period. So I think that we owe the same to our constituents who policy, you know, whose policies we are seeing every day that impact them. So I also think this would increase our parent engagement, this is a stated goal of our school board. People have childcare work schedules, you know, you can see from a blank description, but you don't really know what is going to be discussed until you see the presentation. I would like to give our parent community some time to digest the, more of the details of what will be discussed, so they can make a more informed decision of whether or not to clear their schedule to come join us. And I do think it would make us more effective as a board, each as individuals, some of us have very difficult work schedules, some of us have very small children, so, you know, everybody has different life circumstances that can't guarantee availability between 12:00 PM and 6:00 PM consistently on Tuesdays. And so I, so this is why I'm bringing that forward today for our consideration at a later date. I am sensitive to the impact that this would have on our already very hard-working staff. I'm not making this request with a lack of sensitivity, I'm looking at you, Al, to everything you're facing. I know that this would be a transition, I would like to discuss how we can make this, you know, if the board is willing to do this as painless as possible, maybe we don't do this change during the school year, but wait during the summer, maybe we assign a trial period, see how it goes, we can always readdress it at a later date if we find this to be detrimental to the operation of the schools. But I would like to bring this forward, every other city entity operates this way, the Board of Zoning Appeals operates this way, I think we can, I think we can do it too. So however the operational steps are next, I would be happy to take a lead on drafting a resolution for the board's consideration in consultation with my colleagues, especially Mrs. Ball, who, we discussed this in detail. So I am very eager to engage in this process, thank you for giving me this time to bring this forward. It's been a pleasure working with everybody, School Board Appreciation, I'm going to join what you guys did and say, you know, it has been a delight to get to know everybody on this board, so I also appreciate the school board, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Vice Chair Stevens?
Thank you. There's an old saying, and I once tried to look up its origin, and I really couldn't find its origin, it said it takes a village to raise a child. And sitting up on the dais tonight, looking out in the audience, that's our village. We do what we do, but I'm going to be honest, we're a very small part of what makes our students successful. It's everybody sitting in the audience, it's our students, it's their families, it's support staff, it's teachers, it's administrators, it's everyone, it takes all of us, we have to work together for our children, because they're what matter, they're our future. So it's not just us, it's everyone. We're the village, and we're raising our children, and we want to raise them to be leaders. And I think at the end of the day, each school board member sitting up here on the dais, and Dr. Newman, and our cabinet, our governance team, that's what keeps us all moving forward, is that today's children are tomorrow's leaders. And we need to prepare them to be ethical, successful leaders who think about what's best for everyone. And so, at the end of the day, that's what's important. I do have to commend Ms. Ball, that she was able to write down students' names, because, yeah, I was trying not to cry, I was trying to think, gosh, who has tissues? Because that was a really emotional moment, and I don't think any of us knew it was coming.
No.
I think we were all hugely surprised, it was wonderful. And I really wish the naysayers, who oftentimes are not city residents, could take a minute to see what we all got to see tonight, to see what the beauty of Manassas City and the beauty of our students are, and what the beauty of our community is, because that's what keeps everybody coming back every day, that's why our schools are special, that's why we care. So, thank you, thank you to everyone, thank you to all the kids, I, I just love seeing the kids, it makes my heart feel full. So although we're all really tired and we're not done for the night, I think we can all go with full hearts when we go.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Congratulations to all that were honored here this evening, what a fabulous night, I definitely feel appreciated, and I appreciate all my fellow school board members. I do want to report that earlier this month, I visited the American Legion Robert V. McMaw Memorial, post-ten, at their general membership meeting. Their theme for this year is volunteerism, and I was able to join Mrs. Sabeski from city council to just share what opportunities we have, she shared what the, what the city has to offer, and I shared what volunteer, volunteer opportunities we have in our schools, along with the process for doing that. If there's anybody out there that is interested in volunteering perhaps in your neighborhood school, you can go to the mcpsva.org website on the community tab and read about the opportunities there. Each school has a volunteer coordinator that you are welcome to contact, and just tell them what your interest is, or what your skills are that you would like to share, and we would love that. I also want to do a shout-out to Melissa Neal, she got great kudos from the American Legion, she's our social studies content specialist, and also Juliet Violet, that also Mr. BP had mentioned, she is in our Career and Counseling Center at Osborne High School, and she works with students to recruit them for Boys and Girls State, and she also helps with disseminating information about scholarships. On March sixteenth, I attended Mayfield Intermediate's Black History Program, they had a theme of excellence, they featured several inspirational professionals, speaking of their struggles and their path through excellence, as well as some powerful music. All of Manassas City Public Schools celebrates black, black history throughout February, but we also need to acknowledge the history throughout the year. Osborne Robotics, eighteen ninety-five Lambda Core is the name of the Osborne Robotics Team, and this part of the year is called build season, so for several weeks, they work to build their robot, to handle tasks, to compete at these competitions that are coming up. They work throughout the week, up until like eight o'clock at night, and all day on Saturdays in the maker space. During this build season, people come in and bring lunch in on Saturdays to help feed the kids, so they don't have to leave to go to lunch, so they can stay there and keep working. And I was very grateful to my fellow school board members, Mrs. Brooks and Mrs. Stevens, for helping with a chicken and waffles lunch for the kids and their mentors at Osborne Robotics, and it was a lot of fun, and they loved it. I want to remind everybody that Friday, this Friday, is Artistic Expressions, it's a gallery at Gerani, it's with a partnership we have with the Manassas City Museum, and Gerani hosts it, 6:00 PM Friday, Osborne Art Students. And at last, I'm going to close with, I'm going to paraphrase, paraphrase Dr. Seuss, because I know that his birthday's coming up, and a lot of our schools are celebrating him with Read Across America and all that. And I just remembered this, and I thought I should say it, Mrs. Ball inspired me, talking about the public hearing coming up, encouraging people to come, and also, Mrs. Williams made a reference to it. But here it goes. Unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, it's simply not going to get better, it's not. So we do encourage you to get involved, come out to a public hearing, let us know what's important to you. And with that, I will ask for a motion for closed session.
Chair, I move that the school board of the city in Manassas enter closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section two dash, two dot two dash three seven one one, Part A, Paragraph One of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty, is amended for the following purposes. Two dot two dash three seven one one, Part A, Paragraph One, Discussion of Superintendent's Midyear Evaluation and Discussion of Personnel Matter, P E R S twenty-two twenty-three dash zero three five one.
Second. Is there something else that needs to be in that motion? No? Okay, all right. I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Brooks, that the school board of the city of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section two point two dash three seven one one, Part A, Paragraph One of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty, is amended for the following purposes. Two point two dash three seven one one, Part A, Paragraph One, Discussion of Superintendent's Midyear Evaluation and Discussion of Personnel Matter, P E R S twenty-two twenty-three dash zero three five one. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We are in closed session. Thank you all, thank you for coming.